All right, good morning all.
Good morning.
We apologize if anybody's on Zoom, we're a little late, we had some technical difficulties.
Nobody there.
Nobody there, all right, okay. Do we need to call the meeting in order to approve the agenda?
Any additions or corrections?
Well, do we need to add Randy?
It's just for disinformation.
Okay.
Or you can just talk down here at the bottom.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
With motion is second, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous motion carries, all right, prove the minutes from May one.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor? Okay, approve please.
I looked through them, the number I come up with was one four one. Seven two four point three one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
There was no drainage.
Right, no drainage. You know, there wasn't much in there, it's heavy. People that aren't going to be a lightweight. All right, Mr. Ben Lou, oh no, General, I'm sorry. Any general public concerns?
Are you generally concerned?
You can add that into your presentation.
Okay, Ben, you're up.
I have a couple items for the agendas today. The first is to approve a. Application for construction in the county right of way for Mid American Energy. This is to move their power poles on. Two hundred and seventieth street and Gosh Park Road. We've got all of the right away state. For that stretch, we spent a good portion of last week removing trees. Uh, along the Thorson Timber line, I don't know if anybody made it down there. But we got quite a bit of the uh. Shrubbery, I'll say. Torn out and removed and cleaned up and uh, Mid Americans supposed to be there sometime this week to take a look at the remaining trees to see if anything needs to be. Dropped for the line to go in, so.
You said this is relocating?
Yeah, this is where we bought additional right away on two hundred and seventieth street and Gosh Park to widen our right away from thirty-three feet to. Forty-five on each side.
Okay, so is that the whole length of that?
It's just a mile of Gash Park and a mile of two seventy. Everything south of the bridge.
Just moving them.
Moving them back, yep.
Other than that, everything's all right?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve that application for Mid America to move their power poles back.
I have a question. So just out of. Ordinary would, if we, if they hit a. Line out there, one word, or drainage. Somewhere. Asking a question because it happened out here and I'm. Want to make sure that we're covered.
Yeah, so anytime they drill a hole and would hit a tile line, obviously, they would have to change their plans, move where their pole's gonna be at. Uh, at that point, they usually notify us and either us or an independent contractor would go in and repair the tile. Yep, that was my question. I wanna say it was. When lawmen's built the house out here by the museum. When they went to put a pole in there, they drilled right into a. A tile line, I don't think it was a main, but it was a twelve inch tile. Cause the hole filled up instantly with water as soon as they hit it. Um, so obviously they had to move their. Whole location and we came in and we repaired it later and just sent them a bill.
And they paid it.
Yeah, Mid American's very good at paying. Any, any necessary bills.
Any other lines have been marked, so they are aware that. Something's.
Yep, they'll call in their own.
Fine, I'm just snooping.
No, you're fine.
All those in favor?
Okay, now we get. Big update.
So. For those that haven't seen it yet, uh, Murray Bridge was selected. For County Bridge Construction Fund. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Or up to two million dollars for Murray Bridge replacement. Uh, is the project that's we've applied for, I believe, for like the last fifteen years and have always fallen just short of. The criteria or just short of the, the top three that they used to select. This particular year, they had additional funding um. From the letter, it looks like they had fourteen million available in funding, so they're able to award more than just the top three. And then we were selected. Uh, preliminary estimates for the bridge were that the bridge could cost anywhere up to five million. Uh, on the north-south route and four million if we went east-west. But the, the funding letter says that no matter where we go, they would. Fund up to two million dollars. Uh, talking to a gal that sent us the email, Nikki Sten. What they're looking for is uh, an acceptance. From the county that we. We accept the offer and then she will begin working on a funding agreement that we will have to. Sign as well as a resolution.
And I think I discussed this with you, we've covered that three million, we'll have to push back the pagan project probably.
Yes. Yep, uh, what I looked at. On our current five-year plan, I had added uh, P sixty-six. From Highway three down to the county line. Uh, I think I had that budgeted at a little over two million, so we would end up pushing that back. And. Rolling this forward uh, by being approved for this, talking to her, she said that. We need to basically have it allocated within three years. So. Once we sign the documentation, we'll start moving forward with. Hiring an engineering company to do the. Final design. Uh, and right away acquisition for the project. And. Continue moving forward with the project, uh, she said that if we're showing progress, we could apply for extensions. Yes, if we're getting close to that three-year timeframe and we say, look, we need another six months and we should be able to get this out for letting.
You expect it to take that long?
As I be running to. Archaeological study isn't finished yet, is it?
Right, the archaeological study is supposed to be getting done this spring. Once they finish that report, they'll get it into us and to Chuck Britson, who's our bridge inspector. Um, then they have to finish their report that we've got on contract with them. Um, they've got a lot of the. Legwork done as far as the survey uh, preliminary design, I don't see it taking. Three years for them to turn that preliminary design into a final design, but.
Have we done the, the, the study is like when they did the city bridge down here, wasn't there some?
There's to be the shiners down here for this one, there's none over in that direction. But by us going on a new route, you know, you're gonna have to look for. Usually it's bats. As far as trees. We are gonna have uh. Wetland credits that we're gonna have to purchase because of the route, but no matter which route we go, we're gonna end up having to purchase wetland credits. Whether we go north, south, or east-west. Um, because that whole area does flood. Uh, on the east-west route, it tops the road usually once a year or once every two years. If we go north, south, we're gonna be building a new road. So we're gonna be impacting wetlands that way. Um, so some of those uh, hurdles. Will be new for us, we haven't had to deal with those before, cause typically we're replacing a bridge in the same exact location.
Yeah, right.
So what would the timeframe on it be from start to finish, are you looking at? If we had to go a whole new direction, it could be better than a year, wouldn't it, easily?
Yeah.
And in our timeframe of building in this type of weather, the minute we did that. We'd have snow in August and it snowed till July following you.
This particular one, if you. Either route you go, if it's north, south, or east-west, you could have a. Potentially have a bridge contractor there working on the bridge portion while you've also got a grading contractor working on. Building the roadway to it. Because you've got access. To where the bridge would be at, either from the west side or the south side.
Or yeah, north, northwest, east-west.
Yep.
But we'll determine which direction we go.
Hamilton County did a very similar project three, two, three years ago.
Two, three years ago, yeah.
I mean, were they? For the new road, straight through.
If you go uh. Southwestern city on Highway seventeen. Um, I believe it's just south of the Briggs Woods corner. About a mile south of the Briggs Wood corner on the west side of the road. You'll see almost the same exact idea of what we're trying to accomplish.
So we got a good template to follow.
Yeah, there's, their project cost roughly two and a half million, but it got put under contract back in twenty nineteen, I think, so. Everything's, everything's gone up since then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's nothing that says. Acting, but the letter said they would appreciate it if you would inform them of your acceptance by May fourth.
Yes, so we have to notify the DOT by Friday of whether or not we accept the offer. If we do not, they will move on to the next.
It would be rather foolish not to, would it not?
Right.
Means that you said, did you say fifteen years? Applications for this, fifteen?
We've been, we've been applying for fifteen.
This would be a. Old adage of not looking to give horse in the mouth at this point.
I'm sure if we said no, our name would go very low on the bottom of the.
We just instructed, yes, we accepted.
Right, I think so.
There's no.
I'd take a motion.
Well, I would make a motion that we formally accept this offer. And uh. Then can get back to the DOT folks with that acceptance.
I'd do it today and that way we have.
Okay.
Here we have motion in a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Informed as things.
Yep, we should see, she said the funding agreement, we'd probably see within a month, she's still working on. Uh. Budgets that have been submitted and, and five-year programs, so when she finishes. All of those, she'll start sending out funding agreements, but I can notify um.
Is that Murray Bridge in the historical?
No. It is not, um, Berkhamer is.
I know.
Uh, that's what I was worried about, Murray, Murray is not, so I guess the goal would be to get it replaced before it.
So we can't rebuild Berkhamer there.
Uh, we stuck about a quarter of a million dollars into Berkhamer back in two thousand and five or two thousand and six by redoing. Uh, the east and west caissons. Um. Yeah, it's, it's as good as it's gonna be for Berkhamer. Last week it carried a fifteen-ton end loader over it.
We had fifteen tonner better go across it. Dean is working on that.
Yes, uh, we had an end loader. Leave Humboldt heading to Rutland. And was called in by a private citizen. Law enforcement got involved, uh, he called me, I said, well, basically that's like a citizen's arrest, as far as I'm concerned, they. They saw it, they saw where they went and. Got pictures, I believe, and Dean's in the process of issuing a ticket.
What's that gonna amount to?
Uh, should be a pretty hefty fine. Fifteen ton over a, I think it's a five-ton bridge. One bridge.
It should be.
And it's well posted.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we added additional. We added additional postings. But warning flags on all of them to try and draw attention to them.
Well, we've discussed this several times, we've had people call, had trucks go across them. That bridge.
That's what it is.
I can't imagine that. I wouldn't have the guts to do it.
I know.
People only look underneath the bridges, they wouldn't be grabbing across some of them.
That's true. Buffalo Olsen's Bridge Contractors talking Memorial Day now instead of the first of May, like he was originally talking. Uh, the trees have all been dropped down on Lone Tree, that contractor's still looking at moving in around the fourth of July. Um, like I said, we got the right away relocation uh, next week. At nine AM, we have the bid letting for Delirious Bridge. As well as a budget amendment in my department. At. Beyond that, we're working on on rock and trying to get driveways built.
Oh, what'd you decide with your? Temporary person?
Uh, we are. Yeah, we're going to interview her tomorrow. And try and find out, you know. What she's looking for, what she's capable of. Kinda get a feel for. I, I've been asking Dave to put together a list of. Projects that he.
Could use help with.
Could use help with this summer, so.
See if there's some benefit to us.
Yep. Yep, so he's in the process of filling that out.
And I think the intern programs are great.
They are, I mean, we've had, we've had good luck, uh. Years ago, I used to do that with high school kids that were in the tag program here at the high school. And uh. We'd bring them in a couple days a week for a couple hours. Let them get a feel for it, a few of them went on to. Engineering and graduated, so.
It sounded like you were shocked.
Well, there, there's a, there was a couple that I was like, oh, he's, he's not gonna, he's not gonna go into it.
They just started the day out of school.
Yeah, exactly, and yeah, surprising.
Question on Murray, if we go north and south. Can you guys do the, the road work? Uh, I've got engineer too.
We could. We could haul the material.
But you know, even if we, that's a lot of dirt.
It's, it's gonna be a lot of dirt. So I have, I've had uh, preliminary conversations with Martin Marietta. Because they've got a large stockpile of clay there. Where they're expanding the quarry. Uh, in Humboldt County. Um, he's looking for a number of yards and I don't have that answer for him yet. But. My suggestion would be to use clay.
Yeah.
If we could. Yeah, I mean. As far as proximity, that's about as close. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe you could uh, see if you could to make a lot. Those trucks that they've all stopped with.
Right. Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
To build another road to get to the road, but then it would cut down on the load.
They could haul, not only the load, they could haul one of the regular dump trucks in their box.
In their box, yeah.
Yeah. Just expedite the hauling.
It, it's, it's a lot of dirt work. But to, to ans, to go back to your previous question, how long it's gonna take, uh, you know, you're talking acquiring right away. Uh, environmental clearances, I mean, there's a lot of, the, the actual design of it won't take. Near as long as it will to get all of the permit. Clearance, no, no.
But now that we know this and are accepting this, we should have a lot of this work. Going on at least.
Yes, yeah, I mean, my goal is to, like I said, we're send out, send out a request for. Bids or requests for proposals from engineering companies.
To engineer it, get a co-proposed cost, get it up to bid letting.
Right.
I mean, estimating probably even either the winter or spring probably, huh?
I'm gonna say bid letting's probably a year and a half away.
Yeah.
And. Engineering contract, I mean, that I could see happening in the next. Three, four months where we get something lined up and something signed for a contract. Uh, engineering services entering fees are probably gonna run around. Seven percent, whatever the design is, so it's a five-million-dollar bridge, do the math on that. You know, the, the contract that we're signing with them is probably. Four hundred thousand. Guessing.
So they're gonna give us the thumbs up on which would be the best route to go to, as opposed to, we're looking at it.
I mean, ultimately, it's our call.
Right.
You know, um, I think there's, there's probably more. Hurdles running north and south environmental wise. But. It's the cleaner design of the two that we've looked at.
For future maintenance, it's better too, cause that dang river keeps moving.
Worry about the hill sliding.
Yeah, and then eventually what would happen is when the north-south route would go. You'd just vacate the, the, the hillside on the east side of the existing bridge. So.
You think you gotta fix. Coming back.
It's like my dentist last week, he's like, oh, you need a crown.
Let's try to add that to the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Chewing through it.
I will, I'll, I'll, I'll hurt you guys when I know anything.
All right, we need to um, accept the resignation of Dean Ewald. For Veterans Affairs affected one point twenty-three.
Uh, Dean called me on this and I told him I'd put it on the agenda. Uh, he's having some health issues and I think he's pushing seventy, if he's not over seventy. And I said that uh. We would go ahead. I make a motion to fifteenth. Resignation. And I thank you to. All the work he's done for the veterans.
Absolutely, with regret, I'm sorry to hear him designing, but also I got that motion.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous motion carries, yeah, we wanna thank Deans or all of us, you've done a great job, a lot of.
So, July one, are we going to try to put? Something in place to re. Fill that or?
Now that we have, we can probably start looking now, can't we?
We're gonna start looking now, we have a guy who's interested, I've got to do some work on that or call him. Um. We'd like to get somebody hired because there's a lot of.
Training?
Training that needs to be done.
I can only imagine the paperwork and the.
There's a lot of schooling, there's a national school, there's a. Spring and fall school. And uh. You learn a lot out of it, cause it's a week-long or four-day school sometimes, so. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, sooner we get that. At least started, he can at least work with Dean some hopefully.
All right, committee reports, Dave.
Thursday, the fourth, I had a meeting. Up there on the. Mid-Americans. Station out there, switching station. Then at six o'clock, I had a board of adjustment meeting.
You were welcomed as the new guy? Were you welcomed as the new guy in the board of?
No, no. I've been on there long.
I know, I'm just giving you a hard time.
I know. And uh, Friday I had a board of health meeting.
Okay, Eric?
I guess no official extra meetings last week.
Okay, um, third, I was actually here Tuesday and Thursday, talking with Paul about, we'll discuss that after. Now I was in here for the Mid-American meeting on Thursday afternoon.
I had nothing official, but I would remind people that Wednesday. They have the mobile food pantry. Here in town, right, on the tenth. From four until, is it four thirty? Whenever they run out.
About five thirty, they're empty, so. Get there, like.
Remind people that. They do still do the Livermore and the Temple Homes also. That's it.
All right, on Wednesday the third, I was up here at the courthouse, we met with Bank Guy regarding our ACH. Issues with the payroll and that. Um. It actually ended up being a very easy fix, this, but they were looking deep dive into the, they thought for sure it was in their programming and that. And so once they saw the print screen, somebody just happened to see that behind the print screen, there was like a number thing, and so it was actually something very simple that. Um, could have been fixed, they apologize for not finding it sooner and, and. Regret losing that part of it and they get very good talk on it and everything, so. And they are coming back with, they gave a more interest and things like that, we asked them about interest and things like that, since the interest rates been going up, so they gave us a new. Quote on that, so that's good, and then Friday, of course, we had. Um, a Zoom meeting with a workforce to pull the event.
That was interesting.
But I got one tomorrow too, still looking, I got, no, I got two, I got one today and tomorrow. That's it.
Well, we're done with that. Paul talked a little bit, I was up here on twice through the week, business with Paul about our step out in front. Um, we got a sidewalk to nowhere, like the bridge nowhere. And it, it either needs to be replaced or removed. And it seems comfortably should spend a ton of money replacing a sidewalk that goes absolutely nowhere.
Can we replace it, I mean, can we?
Sure you could replace it, but what'd be?
I mean, no, I mean, can we remove that?
Unfortunately, when we were there, one person did walk us.
The reason why I'm asking is, this is a historical building, so we need to find out if we can, if we use federal money for it.
Yeah, if you're using federal money, you can't.
Yeah.
So I was visiting with Paul. You know, we're gonna have to, if we replace it's. It's, it's just for looks, is what it is. And then it's also something for Paul to scoop the snow off of every year, do you do scoop it, Paul?
And, yeah, it's, it does need replaced, it is all broken.
Oh yeah, there's no option, it, it either has to go or be replaced.
One of the things we talked about was to. For the bike pulsets, that platform on top. Believe that. And then take out those steps that go down from that. To the street. And then. Remove some trees and have dirt work done to.
To level it. Just to set gentle slope down to the street.
And then I think. Down the road, I think it would be a good idea to look at some strategic tree planting. Not the same kind of trees. But to bring some of that back. But first thing we have to before we do that is get everything cleared out there.
Yeah.
I've got some bids on trees. I have dealers out on. I have dealers out on. Turn concrete out, I haven't heard back from anybody on that.
I, I spoke with Ben about it. And he's. Said maybe late summer, he'd have time to remove the concrete, bring in the dirt and level it up. But we can't, he can't do it now because they're busy, they got things they gotta get done.
You get it around. Fourth of July, you know. We can get in there for sure and do some work. Plus we do less damage, I think, with our equipment.
And we can still, we can still get grass started this fall.
Yeah, and then see the tight fall.
Fall is usually a better tend to.
It really is, if you get a nice fall, it's better time to plant grass.
There is a. A war memorial out there, granite's thing, we thought we could move that up by the howitzer. It'd probably be a little more appropriate place for it anyway.
One of them on the. They're splitting the dirt work and the concrete work.
Yeah.
For bidding purposes. Is. Is also throwing a bid in on the trees and moving that.
Oh, okay.
I think that's the direction to go.
You know, I'm sure we're gonna get, get some feedback from the community, oh, keep it the way it is. I think it'll be very attractive with we, we're gonna have to replace the cement on the south side of the flagpole. That platform is all busted up and it's settling out, that's why it was causing some problems, there's three inch lift there. And you can, you know, you can't have a three inch lift at the top of the stairs.
No. That's a crib hazard.
Oh, terrible bottom line. Uh, we need to do something, we could fill that in, put some nice decorative bushes around that circular area.
And it's not like. The access, sidewalk access to the courtyard is gonna be reduced because of that, they have to cross a busy street. To even get to that sidewalk.
Yeah.
Or down at the intersection, they can come across sidewalk to sidewalk.
They come in.
Yeah, there's one that runs to the east and there's one that runs to the west, eh?
Isn't used, I mean, it's blocked.
Yeah.
I would suggest moving forward down that path to those. You know, modifications.
Is it, there's no grass in front of it?
No, no, no.
No, the trees shaded all out.
Well, I had. Mister Rasmussen. Was over and looked at it, and he says there's a, and I'm just going by Rick's. Comment, but he said. You take those trees, those bigger trees out. Uh, it's gonna look bare. And he said the other thing is they can put a grass seed in there that needs basically no sun. And it can get to grow. Oh, I'm just, I. That's what he said. He just made the comment that.
Problem is, those are soft maple trees, soft maple trees have root system close to the surface. And they have a series of beater roots at the surface. And they hold all, absolutely all the nutrients out.
And the rats are pushing up the sidewalk. That's where the oval part is, where the flag is, where it's pushing it up. But.
Well, I, I'd say let's, let's. Give it a week or two before we make a decision, get some feedback, because we're probably gonna hear this from the community.
We're, we're gonna hear, but if we can. News it out as. This is just a first step. And that it's an improvement, there will be. There will still be trees, there will.
Yeah, it's not like we're not gonna put the trees back.
Right.
Please, there's deadlines, I mean, they're getting to the end of their life.
Trunk.
Four of the six that Rick and I talked about. Are hollowing out any.
Yeah.
That their usable lifespan is about done. And they're just.
I would say every one of those.
Yeah, there, there's.
Spruce or whatever.
Maples, there's some maple, there's another tree out there, but they're, they're, they're towards the end of their lifespan. Look at, look at the stumps that you've got out there now, them two of them, they're rotted. Wow, so. But um. I think a good beautification of it. I think the only people using steps is probably the honor guard when we fire out there. And if you make the hill kinda sloped and stood at just drop. Yeah. We would be fine with it.
Right, that's. The whole idea wasn't to take out. The terracing as such, it was just more to soften.
Right.
And it's a garden where the grass is, and there's no terracing there anymore at all.
There's so much erosion. From not being able to have. That is taking out a lot of that, that terracing. Most of what's left is just right out here. Southeast.
And the pipes for the flag, how many times have you taken mower blades out with them, they seem to do them down, they didn't get a lot.
Well enough, we got them down below the blades now.
Yeah, so maybe we'll put it on the agenda for an action item in the near future here, but I just wanna get the information out. Talk about it, different options we're gonna look at, like he's gonna get a couple quotes for trees removal. And possibly the cement removal, then offer to do it late summer. So maybe that's a new point, I don't know. Something to talk about. And then.
Those that we still have to pay them for.
Yeah, but we're gonna be paying them guys anyway.
I know, I'm, that's what I'm saying, but rather than. Have to worry about a bid coming in at twenty-five thousand or whatever that number would be, we.
Right.
Basically put it in our own.
Right, own pocket, take it from right pocket, put it in our left pocket.
Well, at least have them.
And then I, I think we just need to hear from Randy, we have this meeting on Thursday, just information for the board. How we gathered on that. Project that's going out east of town. So if you wanna fill us in on some information, Randy? Yeah, I sent out an email, and I'm sorry, we're waiting on Saturday, but I felt like I needed to get that out, I had initially given you an email. Explaining that we had uh had information on issues on the uh Mid-American Energy Switching Station Construction Site. And uh so this is just basically an update, it's not a matter of anything action uh required, but uh. My job uh responsibilities and the ordinance is to keep you up informed with, with whatever's going on. It became quite apparent after the uh first initial email that I sent you that. Uh, it, there was a lot, lot of information and a lot of it very inconsistent. And uh. I just felt like. There was no way for me, maybe it would be for somebody else, but for me to be able to. Put that information together and make it uh discernible for somebody else to actually make heads or tails of what's going on. And so what I did, and I talked to Dave Lee, um he was my initial contact. About an issue and we, and I, we decided that would be a good idea to have. Uh, people involved that have an interest in that or are dealing with that. Together just to gain information with everybody in the room. That was the attachment that I sent out to you with uh with the email. Whether you had an opportunity to look at it or not, I don't know, I can make you hard copies of that if you'd like. Basically, I would just sum it up to saying, right now, we're still in the research phase. We know what we know now, but we also know we don't know some things. So it's kinda like an equation. We may know X, we may know Y, but we're trying to find Z. And uh, the end, the conversation. Set it up so everybody can explain what their information was, that's what I put. In the attachment. And so uh. There, there's nothing really more. To report on that at right now, because I, we don't have all the information. But I just thought it'd be a good idea to come and have any discussion if you have questions. About what you read, I would ask Dave and and Rick, maybe if you haven't read it over. Let me know if it looks like it's okay, because. The next step was, uh, I would get back to Mid-American Energy Representative after. You know, providing that information to you, to the Board of Supervisors. So uh. Some very interesting.
Your email had it leaked out very well, but.
I tried to do, yeah, I tried to do it in an outline form, you know, who was there and basically what I had. Gained up to that point, and then what happened to have that information immediately. Wasn't anything, you know, as far as decisions made or anything like that. Just so that. And I just wanted to make sure everybody heard the same thing, I think they did, didn't they, Rick?
I believe so.
And then the Mid-American wrapped, he had to go back and talk to his people. You know, seeking authority to make decisions. He is, and hopefully we'll hear back from them, what you're gonna do. The wash the room is, it is a switching station, not a substation. Substations, you drop your voltage, the transformers and stuff, this is just aerial transfer of power. Where it comes straight across three or if it goes north or it goes down the corn belt. It's all the same voltage, it's just which way you're gonna feed. And what it is, is a feed back to the substation in east. So we can get the town back on if we go out lights. It's a switching station, everybody says it's a substation, it's not. Yeah, I think that got. Started because they did have a sign out there that said substation. They had mislabeled it, they have that other sign that they have. So, that was a very first thing I, I went after to find out on that research and. It was, it was pretty quick to find out, to know it wasn't a substation, that somebody had done that. And so. But maybe that language isn't well known by, or the definition of the phrase is not well known, so. Yeah, Dave, it's a good thing you brought that up to. Make sure everybody understands that for sure. But I entertain any questions about what the attachment that I gave you. Was for your information continuation, and so. I got, I have come up with a little more info, give it to you now. There is such a thing as a stormwater. Pollution prevention plan. Which is required to have on site. In case you do hit a tile line. And in that plan, it tells you what you do. If you do hit a. Tile line. So you could check with the DNR and see if they have that. SW PPP. On file with them.
For that property.
For that property. Cause that would solve. The issue. Is this, they're supposed to have that posted there on site. So if someone does hit a tile line, I can go there and look at it, this is what I now have to do. And that was my reminder to that meeting. So.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Check and see, see if that had, if that would apply for that permit. And if they didn't, they need to have it. Cause it also controls the silt fences and that type of stuff. For runoff from the site when they're doing their dirt work. Yeah, that would be very helpful. Well, it, it would have solved the problem. Wouldn't have been a problem, they would have went and said, oh, we hit a tile line, this is what we're supposed to do. Right. You know. I thought the information that was presented at the meeting was. Was pretty good, I thought it was uh. I think the most important part for me was that everybody heard the same thing at the same time, so they can't say. No, that wasn't, I, and that's why I tried to put it in. That attachment that I wrote, and it was just notes. Like minutes. So we can come back to that and say, here's. Here was the information gathered.
It's a good idea.
Everybody had an opportunity. You know, to provide that information. Right. No, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Yeah.
So I got.
Anything else?
I would tell you that uh we did not have a meeting last week with. Uh, Dean and the deal up north of town. Uh, John was called away uh for a family emergency. Um, so our whole hope is, Dean put out an email. Uh, I think Saturday. Requesting what day would work best. So hopefully this next week, we're going to get that um date. So that we can figure out something. And get something moving forward, or we'll end up right back here next year chasing this, I mean. Thing. So I just bring that up to you.
Good. All right, anything else? The motion is second to adjourn, all in favor? Nine nineteen, all right.